Good morning, everyone. I'm Joanne Burrow, your vice chair this year, and in the absence of the chairwoman, I will be leading the meeting. And I would first like to say welcome and introduce you to Pastor Matt Carver of Burnt Hickory Church of Christ for our invocation. And he will be followed by Officer Blake Schrager and Officer Roberto Santiago for the pledge. And they're from Cobb County PD Precinct 4. If you will stand, please.
Our Father in heaven, you who establish justice, righteousness, and oversee the welfare of all creation. We ask your favors and blessings today over the deliberations of this assembly. We thank you for the public servants who are serving this city here this morning. We ask that you would bless them with wisdom, clarity, insight, and illumination as they make decisions within this body. I pray for all of the participants here this morning and that a spirit of kindness, peace, love, and good feeling prevail throughout all things. We humbly ask all of your favors and blessings upon our good city, upon our good county, and upon the good state of Georgia. It's through Christ Jesus, our Lord, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
The pledge leaves us to the flag of the United States of America. For which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor and PD. We're going to have a little bit of a officially call the June 14th BOC meeting to order. And thank you for your patience with me. We're going to move the proclamation or resolution actually honoring Mike Boyce up to first on the agenda. So I will be coming down and ask that Senator Doc Rett and Senator K. Kirkpatrick, Judy Boyce, and anyone that would like to join us to come down.
Good morning, everyone. It is truly an honor to be here today with Judy Boyce and our state senators. They have a resolution that was adopted at the state senate that they would like to present to Judy on behalf in memory and in honor of Mike Boyce, our former chairman.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. The senator and I, we're going to sing a duet together this morning and present this. A resolution honoring the life and memory of Colonel Michael H. Boyce and for other purposes. Whereas the state of Georgia mourns the loss of one of its most distinguished citizens with the passing of Colonel Michael H. Boyce on January 25th, 2022. And whereas Colonel Michael H. Boyce was born September 1st, 1949 in Braley, California, a beloved son of Milich and Rosario Reader Boyce. And whereas he served as the guardian of the nation's freedom and liberty with the United States Marine Corps, valiantly and courageously protecting his fellow Americans for 30 years and retiring at the rank of full bird colonel. And whereas upon his military retirement, Colonel Boyce became a government and military contractor before running to become the chairman of the Cobb County Board of Commissioners in 2016. And whereas during his four years as chairman of the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, Colonel Boyce garnered a reputation as a true public servant, putting the needs of those he served above anything else. And whereas dedicated, he dedicated, was dedicated to bringing his community together, Colonel Boyce was known to handle controversies with grace and diplomacy, insisting on holding multiple town hall meetings with residents face to face when tough issues arose.
And whereas he was united in love and marriage to his wife Judy and was blessed with three remarkable children, Allison, Kevin, and Sean, as well as five wonderful grandchildren, Jacob, Ethan, Avery Hart, Penelope, and Charlotte. And whereas he gave inspiration to many through his high ideals, morals, and deep concern for his fellow citizens, and the devotion, patience, and understanding he demonstrated to his family and friends were admired by others. And whereas he was a person of magnanimous strengths with an unimpeachable reputation for integrity, intelligence, fairness, and kindness. And by the example he made of his life, he made this world a better place in which to live. And whereas a compassionate and generous man, Colonel Boyce will long be remembered for his love of family, friendship, and community, and will be missed by all who had the great fortune of knowing him. Now therefore be it resolved by the senate that the members of this body join in honoring the life and memory of Colonel Michael H. Boyce and express their deepest and most sincere regret at his passing. Be it further resolved that the secretary of the senate has authorized and directed to make an appropriate copy of this resolution available for distribution to the family of Colonel Michael H. Boyce. That's Senate Resolution 609 by Senators Rett of the 33rd, Tippens of the 37th, Kirkpatrick of the 32nd, Albers of the 56th, and Thompson of the 14th, adopted in the senate, March 4th, 2022.
Millie, wait for Millie.
Michael. Hi, Michael. Get over here.
Judy's going to say a few words. Go ahead.
All right, here we go. Three, two, one. Thank you.
Sure. I just want to thank you, the board of commissioners, good friends. Millie, you know, Mike had four wonderful years here. He was a true servant. He did what he believed was right, always. It didn't matter what political party you were or anything else. He just, he believed in doing what was right. And I appreciate that you honor him with this. Thank you. Ask can Michael to say something because Michael is a dear friend and also he worked so closely with Mike and Millie.
Well, thank you. I've been known to be quite shy, so this is a most auspicious occasion. And there isn't a day that goes by that as I travel Cobb County and around the area that I don't think of the chairman. And this is a most fitting recognition and sincere thanks to those leaders that have sponsored us. And he certainly will never be forgotten for all that he's done. And as I always think about his comments, one of the things he'd always said was, "Thank you for all you do for this county." And again, I simply say that we're very fortunate in his memory lives on with us each day. Thank you. And Judy, it's always good to see you and it's, we're still family.
She always has something to say.
Okay, so what I do have to say is that Cobb County truly owed Michael Boyce a debt of gratitude. He made this county a place where we all could live and work together. He was transparent, and I'm truly sorry that he's gone, but his legacy will be with us and is truly appreciated by us in this county.
It was my pleasure as his commission assistant to work with Mike Boyce for four years. He dearly loves this job, believe it or not. You know, if you knew him at all, you knew him to be full of laughter. And that's how he was to work with as well. It's so very hard for me, and I know for Judy, to realize that he's no longer on this earth, that he has gone beyond and he's taken a trip up in his helicopter. And we'll meet him one day up there in the sky. But, you know, Mike gave his heart and soul to this county and he, in my opinion, made a difference. And thank you, Mike Boyce, and thank you, Judy.
Well, thank you all. And I think on this Flag Day, June 14th, it's very fitting that we honor our former chair, who also was a 30-year career marine veteran. So thank you all for being here. Not a day goes by that we don't think of him as well, Michael. He was a good man. And now we will have Commissioner Gambrell present a proclamation for Elder Abuse Month.
And can I have all those that are with our elder abuse awareness come up and join me, please?
Good morning. No rose. No rose.
Well, good morning. It's with great pleasure that I get to give this proclamation. Whereas older adults deserve to be treated with respect and dignity to enable them to serve as leaders, mentors, volunteers, and vital participating members of our communities. And whereas, as our population lives longer, we are presented with an opportunity to think about our collective needs and future as a nation. Ageism and social isolation are major causes of elder abuse in the United States. And whereas elder abuse may be physical abuse, sexual abuse, neglect, exploitation, emotional abuse, abandonment, or self neglect. Some warning signs are bruises, broken bones, and burns, unexplained withdrawal from normal activities, an unusual depression and anxiety, sudden changes in financial situations, bed sores, poor hygiene, and unusual weight loss, strained or tense relationships, and fear of family members, friends, or caregivers. And whereas, recognizing that it is up to all of us to ensure that proper social structures exist so people can retain community and societal connections, reducing the likelihood of abuse. Preventing abuse of older adults through maintaining and improving social supports like senior centers, human services, and transportation will allow everyone to continue to live as independently as possible and contribute to the life and vibrancy of our communities. And therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim June 15th, 2022, as Elder Abuse Awareness Day in Cobb County. We would like to encourage everyone to commit to building a safer community for elder residents and honoring older adults. Presented this 14th day of June, 2022.
Commissioner Gambrell, the rest of the board of commissioners, we want to thank you for this proclamation. And just understand that the district attorney's office, one of our primary goals is to ensure all our citizens, especially our most vulnerable, are protected and taken care of. And we do everything we can to make sure that everybody has the best life here in Cobb County, just like you do. Thank you.
Talk about the knitting, crocheting?
Yeah. So I will call your attention to the crocheted squares here and on Commissioner Gambrell's chair. The task force and others involved with elder abuse prevention and initiatives for the past couple of years have kind of blanketed Cobb County with these crocheted squares to bring information, education, and enlightenment to elder abuse issues. So look for those all over Cobb County and help us as we engage in the fight against elder abuse.
Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners. At this time, I would like to ask the co-chair and the chair of the Martha Log Committee to come forward. That's Aqua and Heather, and they wanted to come forward. They will share a little bit about the impetus of the award, and then I will present the overall winner of this award.
Thank you, Dr. McMorris and commissioners. I'm Aqua Liao, and this is Heather Walker. We are the co-chairs of the 2022 Excel Alumni Award. So the Excel Alumni Association is the management development program created, excuse me, the Excel Management Development Program was created an award to recognize Excel graduates, graduates who consistently display competence, excellence, integrity, professionalism, and other qualities in their daily work. This year, we are very, very pleased to announce that we have eight nominees. Will you please come forward and join us?
Nick Adams, Dina Fincher, Clinton Jones, Matthew Kalashewski, Kimberly Limbley, Sarah Logue, Keith Mazonkey, and Captain Christopher Michael.
I'd also like to ask the commissioners to join our award nominees. Come down, please. So a few minutes ago, over in the learning center, we recognized each of our nominees. So at this time, we would just like to recognize our award winner. Each of these awardees have excelled in so many ways. Without you, we could not do what we do here in Cobb. So on behalf of our management team and the board of commissioners, I say thank you for all that you do. So with that being said, we would like to announce that our overall winner, and I want to make sure that I get this name correctly, is Matthew Kalashewski. So please join me in congratulating Matthew. Thank you so much. So at this time, we will have a photo.
Say what? Yeah, just a little bit.
We have, we kind of missed a small little section. Since we had so many nominees and we really had, we had three people that tied as runner-up, so we're also giving them special recognition, which is Division Chief Nick Adams, Clinton Jones, and Captain Christopher Michael.
You all have no idea how difficult it was to select an award winner this year. We had some amazing nominees. Each and one of, every one of you are just such a tremendous asset to the county. We thank you so much. And for the three of you that we just recognized, we want you to know you all had a three-way tie for our runner-up. It was that close. It was that difficult for us to decide. So thank you again.
First time, right? First time we've had a three-way tie?
Yes. Absolutely. Congratulations, and thank you so much.
At this time, we will have an update on Truist Park from our finance director, Bill Volkman, followed by an update on the battery from Mike Plant of the Braves.
I'm going to start with this slide for us today. First, I want to start before we get into the numbers and just congratulate the Braves on their World Series victory last year. So congratulations.
Twelve in a row.
This is just a photo from the World Series. You can kind of see the park and then the battery. So I'm going to go over some financial updates, and then I'm going to turn it over to Mike to go over the 2021 highlights, the foundation, and what's coming in 2022. So, oh, sorry, there we go. All right, so this is, this is where everything kind of started. So I always like to start with this and kind of go forward from here. This was the original baseball when we, when the investment was being contemplated. The local contribution of $300 million was capped. The Braves' contribution was listed at 372. Their contribution towards this investment was significantly more than that. So again, the county's contribution was capped, and the Braves continued to invest above and beyond the 372. All right, so this is, this is the, really the financial story of this journey. So back in 2015, when the county issued the debt to fund the construction of the stadium, we released projections of how we plan on paying for that debt. The very top, you'll see the annual debt service is projected at $22.5 million. And then you see 2018 through 2021, the debt service was right at that. And the important note that I want to call to everybody's attention, back in 2015, the county, as a part of those original projections, said that they would pay $6.4 million each year out of the county's general fund. And that is the second line under the funding breakdown. But I wanted to just make you aware that since 2018, we've contributed out of the general fund, 5.3 million, 4.4 million, just over 5 million. And during the pandemic in 2020 and then 2021, to 4.8 million, almost 4.9 million. So that was the money out of the general fund that we contributed to fund the annual debt service. Every year since the beginning of this investment, we have been below that $6.4 million projection, including a pandemic. So that says a lot of the sustainability of this investment. You'll note the other revenue sources listed here. As we kind of break those down, we have hotel motel taxes, the Cumberland Special Service District 2 property tax, and the Cumberland Special Service District 1 $3 room night fee. These special service districts were created simply for this investment. This was the reason they were created and the major funding source to fund the annual debt services we were to move forward. And then we had the county's rental car tax. So the roundout, the total county contribution per the projections was 16.4 million. And obviously, we have to meet that every year. But how we do that, you see the other buckets have increased, and the general fund amount has been consistently below the 6.4 million. And at the very bottom of this slide, you'll see the amount of property taxes that this piece of property contributed in 2015, $50,000 to the county's general fund. In 2021, it was over $2 million. All right, so this is, there's a lot of ways to look at this, and I know you can kind of, some people say you can make numbers say a lot of different things. The very top line is the $6.4 million of projections that we had in 2015. The red line in the middle is what the general fund paid out for each of those years. If you take away the amount of property tax, the battery has paid in, that reduced to $2.7 million in 2021 during a pandemic, and 3.1 in 2020 during the height of the pandemic. So I just wanted to show you that there's a lot of ways you can look at this, but you can take a very conservative approach and say it's $4.9 million in 2021, or 2.7 after you take out the revenue generated specifically from the properties located at the battery. And just a, just one other side note, the $2.7 million is 0.77% of the general fund's property taxes on an annual basis. So less than 1% of the county's overall general fund property tax revenue that we collect on an annual basis. And all of this couldn't happen without the property values that have increased in and around the area. So we talked about that first year, the $50,000. The battery property values in 2014 were $5 million and have grown to $626 million in 2021, and we expect those to continue to grow in 2022 as those final digest and assessments will be complete. The battery property values increased by over $43 million from 2020 to 2021. The property taxes paid into the county since 2015 from just the battery, because again, the stadium does not pay property taxes because it is not, it is owned by the authority, is $14.2 million since 2015. The Board, the Board of Education has collected $19.5 million since 2015 with $0 of investment into this, into this property. The property taxes paid to the Cumberland Special, or sorry, the Cumberland CID during that time is $5.2 million. All right, and then we've talked about the investments, but I want to show you a history of the revenue collections related to the projections. So again, the far left column, you'll see the 2015 projections. This is everything with excluding of the general fund contribution. And I wanted to show you kind of what those looked like. Three of these revenue sources, with the exception of the property taxes in the Cumberland Special Service District II, hit all-time highs in 2019 pre-pandemic. And you can see what, what the pandemic did to some of these revenue sources in 2020 and 2021. Specifically, the $3 room night fell from a high of almost $3.8 million to a low of 2.5 in 2020. I can say, in 2022, these have rebounded nicely, and we're seeing significant improvements in both the $3 room night and the hotel motel taxes. But again, going down to the hotel motel tax line, that hit a high of over $3 million in 2019 and fell to a low of $419,000 in 2020. So, you can see what the pandemic had as an impact on these revenue sources, and the county was still able to maintain an investment from the general fund below the $6.4 million as we were to move forward. These are revenue sources, with the exception of the hotel motel tax on, in the, under the Omni and Aloft, these are revenue sources that were not a part of the 2015 projections. These are additional revenues that are flowing through to the county, the Board of Education, and the state. Just want to call your attention to 2020, when the Braves were not able to have fans in the stands for games. Look at that first column under sales tax, you'll see it's $3.3 million. That fell from 16 million, 16.4 million in 2019. Just take a look at what that did in 2021. Fans have returned. That is an all-time high of 22 point, almost 22.8 million dollars. That is split, obviously, between the county, the Board of Education, and the state based on the sales tax that's allowed. But for 2020, these additional revenue sources generated 5 point, almost $5.6 million for the county. Again, these cannot, a lot of these cannot be used to support the debt service, but they do feed our SPOLOX projects and help cover the cost of increasing cost for all of the county's SPOLOX projects, as well as the Board, as well as the Board of Education's SPOLOX projects of $3.7 million. In addition to that, again, the state receives a large share of that, of 15, almost $15.5 million. And just over this four-year period, this, these, these few revenue sources generated $64.9 million between the county, the Board of Education, and the state. Yes, ma'am?
Does the 22, 781, 380, 2021 collections, does that include the World Series games and everything?
So, that's a great question. So, all of the numbers, with the exception of the sales tax, so all the numbers, with the exception of this one number, are shown on our fiscal year basis. This one number, because of the way we have to collect the sales tax data, is on a calendar year basis. So, yes, that does include the World Series, and Mike, keep me honest, that does include the World Series timeframe because it's on a calendar year basis. All of the other numbers that you see here, hotel motel and otherwise, end September 30. So, there is a little bit of a difference.
Okay.
Okay?
Thanks.
You're welcome. That's a great question. Okay. And just jumping to this, this last slide here, I just want to show you a little bit of the breakdown. We've gone over all of these revenue sources individually. But these are additional revenues that have come into the county, the Board of Education, the CID, and the state for one fiscal year is over $34.6 million. And that does not include the $6.1 million of annual contributions that the Braves make to the county to help fund the debt service. That is extremely impressive as we kind of walk through these. There's, as we go through the numbers, again, just keep in mind, the original projection was $6.4 million out of the general fund. And these, most of these are not even contemplated as part of those original projections. Is there any questions on the financial side before I turn it over to Mike to discuss 2021, foundation, and then 2022? Commissioner?
Of course, it's become, thank you for the presentation on this. There has certainly been a lot of discussion kind of out in the ether of the expense to our taxpayers. Just curious, because I think the tagline that's been floated around is it's costing us $15 million or $16 million from taxpayers. And that's, I'm assuming they're saying it's a net, I know that there are some questions around the analysis, but I was just curious, from your perspective, looking at the numbers, what is the impact to taxpayers as a bottom line?
That is a great question. So, I've seen that number two, and we've reviewed the data on that as well. This is what we would stand by as far as our impact. And then I will say you take this number, and even if you want to take the most conservative of this number, you look at the 4.9 in 2021, okay? And then with that, you can add in the stadium, the stadium capital contribution of over, just over $1.2 million. That would be about our limit. We wouldn't go above and beyond that based on 2021 numbers. I know where the 15 has been discussed, is that a lot of the reference is coming into the additional service districts that were created. But again, those were created specifically for this project. And of those service districts, the property tax component is paid by commercial properties.
That was going to be my follow-up question. These are tax districts that are not, are they, they're not the burden of all of our taxpayers in the county. It's a
It is.
Specific locale.
Very specific locale in and around the stadium, very similar to the boundaries of the Cumberland CID. Not quite the same, but very similar. And again, commercial properties are the ones that are paying this. So, that's when we talked about, if you look at the $2.7 million, that's, my view is the net event, investment of the county is really coming out of pocket for. And again, that is 0.77% of the county's general fund taxes. So, imagine that 2.7 is now split amongst every property taxpayer in the county. That is a very, very, very small number.
Thank you for the clarification on that, too.
Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Mike. And Mike, I'm going to click. Any other question? I'm sorry, Commissioner, sorry.
Okay, Bill, I know you and I've had some robust conversations on the $3 a night hotel motel.
Yes.
And where I am struggling is with the collection history.
Yes.
You know, you are showing that in 2021, we collected $2.85 million. However, that $2.85 million didn't actually come to the county because 50% of that goes to Cobb travel and tourism. But you're not showing the funding that goes to other sources. Yet, if you go back to your
This one right here.
The funding and annual debt service? Yeah.
Yes.
You show that, you know, the county had $1.8 million. So, there's $400,000 missing here.
That's correct.
And, and so, again, while we see things floating around, this is also where our constituents are not understanding how we're getting to these numbers. Because if you, again, this doesn't make sense to me, and we're not showing how these funds are truly spent throughout other areas as well.
Absolutely. That's a great question. I'm going to flip to this slide and show exactly what you're talking about. So, the $3 room night for 2021, we collected almost, or just over $2.8 million. This is a great question. So, as contemplated in 2015, that this, these funds would go to service the stadium debt. The Board had made changes to how that they would use these funds since 2015. So, I did want to show, based on projections, what we actually collected. But to your point, this is exactly what we want to have this slide for. This is showing how we paid for it. And you'll notice in 2021, we collected $2.8 million roughly for the $3 room night. And to your point, we did not use that. We used just over $1 million of that to fund the stadium debt. Because the Board had made decisions to use those dollars in other ways, Cobb travel and tourism being a component of that, PD overtime being a component of that. And we've, we've made some other decisions to use it for circulator or other things like that. So, as we change how we use that, I didn't want to take away from the projections of the revenue that they were originally created for, but I did want to show you the use of those. So, that is a good point. You're, and, and to your point, have, you know, we talk about the 2.7. Obviously, it's a policy decision, but that is one of the things that does impact that. As we take away from these revenue sources and use them for other things, that would have an impact or slow that number. We understand that, especially Cobb travel and tourism feeds, helps feed the area, so it is a supporting role of this. But again, it's a, it's a policy decision of how we want to use those funds. So, I wanted to make sure to show you both scenarios, revenue collected versus projections, and how we use those. But yes, to your point, there are other sources or other uses of the $3 room night funds that the county does use those, not solely for debt service. And that, that is a very good point.
Okay, and I guess that's where I still struggle with the budget and everything else as, as our conversations is, because again, you know, we're handed these reports. It shows, you know, we're collecting $2.8 million, but that $2.8 million isn't truly going to cover this debt like it's being portrayed.
So, and that's why it's very important to have the funding and use slide. That's going to show how we're taking care of this. Because, and also, in honesty, one of the things that we talk about is the $3 room night was, you know, we originally, you know, projected a use of just over $2.7 million to go towards this. The actual collections that they brought in for the first couple of years were around $3.6 million. So, there was contemplation using that for circulator. So, there is a little bit of give and take on how we, how we handle that. But again, the circulator services the Battery and the surrounding areas to help support that, that area. So, there, there is, you're right, there is some conversations, and there's also a little bit of a lag. So, when we look at the property tax revenues collected for the CSSD II, that, just because of the timing in which we collect those, whatever we collect can be used on the, whatever we collect this year can be used for next year because we have to have the cash in hand to do so. So, there always is going to be a little bit of lag between time of collections and time of cash out the door.
Okay, I just, you know, I guess I'm, I'm hoping that from this conversation that the Board can also then look at the policy because it is technically expired for 2023, according to, because it says here, if renewed. Because again, you know, you're showing that we collected 2.8. Your slide is showing we used 1.8 million, but if they did the 50%, that's 1.4. The math isn't adding up here. In 2023, the current contract goes to paying over 67% of this fund to Cobb travel and tourism, which means again, the general fund or some other source of revenue is going to have to fill in what's not going here, which is what's being proposed here.
Sure.
But then in 2024, it goes to 75%.
Yes.
So, again, while I understand and I know the Braves are doing great, this is misleading.
And, and that is, that is one of the big things that we look at as we walk through this. As you can see in the year which we changed that, I believe it was, this is the, if I'm not mistaken, in 2020, or 2019 was the first year we made that switch. And you can see the downward slide that we had into, through 2019, and that kind of popped back up a little bit. A lot of that is very much pandemic, but also the way we choose to use those funds. When, under the previous chair, one of the focuses on was using some of that money to pay for PD overtime and then also continue with the circulator. So, there have always been a little bit of a transition in how the Board wishes to use those funds. And as you said, the, the amount for Cobb travel and tourism does increase to 67.5% for 2023. And then, I believe, 75% in 2024. So, that, that does impact. But I think at the time, the Board felt that that was, that was the, the policy decision of the Board to make that funding decision. Okay, yes, Commissioner?
And I think what we're kind of getting at is that total, that total row with the, that 16.4, 84, how we get there, or 16.384, how we get there is really, you know, making sure that we are transparent with those callouts so that there can be, it can be obvious, okay, this one is going here, and it's not just that bucket, but like what part of that bucket, and then kind of how that bucket splits out, and maybe that might help.
Yes.
Well, and then, and while I understand that, but we also have to look that, you know, we're going to be implementing this Evergreen study. We've got another step coming, and that impacts the overtime, which again, comes from this, which if this $3 for a night hotel motel is supposed to be going to, will never cover that at the increased rate that we're going through our overtime either, which then goes back and impacts the general fund.
And, and Commissioner, that's one of the things that I want to stick to, the original projections. Because yes, we do know that there is, you know, additional cost beyond that. So, when we talk about the 2.7, that is for the annual debt service only. We do know that there is PD overtime, there's the circulator, there's the stadium capital maintenance. But again, all those added into are still significantly below what we originally projected is, and especially the number that you hear is 15, 15 million. That is, we are nowhere close to that. And especially once you start to take out the Braves' investment on the property tax piece, that number even significantly further reduces. So, I think that's why you definitely need both slides because it is very important to see how it is paid, which is what this slide is, and then also to follow up with where we, what did we project? Because again, the projections were in 2015, and policy decisions have been made since then to change how those funds are used. So, I do think it's very important to show both sides of that coin to say, hey, we projected it was going to be this, and it has exceeded expectations. How we choose to use those funds is obviously a Board decision. But I want to show you both that as well. Sorry.
Right, and, and Bill, I appreciate the slides, and I just want to make it clear, I want to make it clear that it was the Board's decision to reallocate the funds. I don't want the walkaway to be that there was some type of nefarious acts or anything going on with the funding, but it was the Board's decision, the Board's policy to utilize the funds for the circular, PD overtime, et cetera.
That is absolutely correct. Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner, sorry.
I was going to say, it seems like though, even with the, this is kind of like the discussion, our policy discussion for how to get to that 16 and making sure that that's something that makes sense for our budget. But the silver lining is, is we're still operating underneath the threshold of what was originally projected. Not, not, I'm not talking about the total, but the, the 6.4 committed out of general fund. So, it's still totaled up a little, it's still totaled up less than that.
Yes, Commissioner, I mean, that's, that's the key takeaway, I think, with, with anything as we talk about the uses that, you know, we, we have to pay. At the end of the day, between the county and the Braves, we paid 22.4, 22.5 million. Our portion is 16, just under 16.4. The Board can make any policy decision, decide how you want to get to that number. But at the end of the day, we pay out 16.4. And the reason we were able to make those policy decisions is because of the growth in the other areas that you see here. Property tax related to the Cumberland Special Service District II is one that you see continue to grow. And because of that growth, one, we were able to hold the general fund contribution under $6.4 million during a pandemic while still reducing the amount that we contribute from CSSD I, the $3 room night. So, without the additional growth in the other areas, you wouldn't have been able to make that policy's decision without negatively impacting the general fund. I think that is really your key takeaway here is the general fund's impact. How you want to do the other sources and how you want to make policy decisions around that is absolutely the Board's decision. And we, that is always our counsel when we have those policy decisions. Can we sustain that without negatively impacting the general fund? And I think we've shown, even through a pandemic, yes, you were able to do that. You were able to contribute additional dollars to Cobb travel and tourism. Yes, you were able to contribute to the circulator, PD overtime, without negatively impacting the general fund. So, I view this very much as, especially during a pandemic, a win. Despite a pandemic, I would say it's still, it's, it's a very big win. So, that's, that's, that's kind of our walkaway. But again, it is a policy decision of how the Board wishes to use those individual funding sources. Commissioner?
Thank you. Is there any way you could give us a breakdown for the special service districts?
Absolutely.
And what's allowed? I know when we revised that to, it's partial PD, it's not, it doesn't cover the full amount. Some of it is still coming out of the general fund. So, if we could see a breakdown for this, especially the two service districts, and how that money is distributed?
So, I can tell you, we use 100, absolutely, to answer your question, we will provide you that breakdown, and we'll give you a history of that breakdown. So, it's not a one-year snapshot, it's a year-over-year, so you can see how that changes.
Thank you.
The, the property tax component of CSSD II, that is 100% used to fund the stadium debt. There is a year, one-year lag. So, when you notice the collections versus uses, it is a little bit of a lag as we walk through that. But yes, we will have, be happy to provide that to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions before we hear from Mr. Plant?
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Bill, very thorough, and I appreciate the follow-up.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Plant?
Thank you. Commissioners, good morning. Are you going to work this quicker for me, Bill?
Yeah, I got you.
Okay.
Sorry.
Yeah, so, on behalf of the whole Braves organization, we're, we're pleased to be able to address the Board this morning and give you a few updates. In addition to what Bill just said, we're proud of the financial impact that we've made over the last couple of years and, and obviously, are confident that those numbers will continue to grow as we build out more of the Battery and, and have more and more positive impact announcements. You know, one of the things that we also pride ourselves on through the Atlanta Braves Foundation is giving back to the community where we live and work. And the slide you'll see here, I'm not going to read every one of these bullet points. I'll point out a few key highlights in 2021 of how we did impact Cobb County and the community. I'll point out a few key highlights in 2021, how we did impact Cobb County and the community at large. For example, we partnered with the Cobb Community Foundation through the pandemic, provided them $50,000 in '21. We provided some additional money to them in 2020. But more importantly, Truist Park became a, a holding ground for millions of meals that were distributed to Cobb citizens in need. And as you see some of the numbers there, 4.2 million pounds of, of food flowed through at Truist Park, and that, that equated to about 3.8 million meals that were distributed beyond Cobb. We're also very active in the military and the veterans organizations here in Cobb County. The memorial fund that's being, has been generated to, to pay tribute and honor to all of the Cobb veterans, we provided a $50,000 grant to that memorial services pursuit of funds. We also are very proud to announce that the, we're, we're the home base for the Warrior Alliance. For five years, we've provided an office for them. We actually moved out of our Braves development, development company offices for, for the Warrior Alliance. They provide tons of veteran services for veterans that are coming home and, and obviously need a chance to, to start integrating themselves into society and, and support for their families and, and a lot of different services. So that, that was kicked off last July, and they'll be there at least five years. Obviously, first responders, Cobb police and firefighters doing incredible job, not only for us, but the entire community. So we have a number of programs that are, are recognizing their support of all of us for police officers and firefighters. Growing the game is important to us. We provided $200,000 to refurbish and renovate the Anderson Boys and Girls Club baseball fields last year, and we'll continue to look at those opportunities throughout Cobb in, in years to come. Schools and education, we do a lot with Cobb County schools and the teachers, kids, youth programs, providing teachers with various opportunities and giving back to them in a number of different projects, as you see here, how we support teachers and the good work that they're obviously doing in the, in the school system. And then one of the last things we did is we have this most valuable teacher program where we invested $50,000 to support teachers across Cobb County. There's a number of other programs you'll see listed there. I can assure you that as recently as yesterday, our Braves Foundation, we're looking at other additional programs to support the, the schools in Cobb County and also to grow the game in Cobb County. And as I said earlier, one of the things we're really proud of is giving back to this great community. Couple highlights from 2021, I'll start at the bottom, one that we don't forget and take too lightly, but certainly winning the World Series was incredible impact for our organization, our fans, the, the 9 million visitors that came to the Battery last year to attend games and concerts and, and obviously everything else that we have to offer there from all over the world. So I wouldn't, I don't want to get too far over our skis, but yes, we have a 12-game winning streak and keep your fingers crossed that we can keep that going tonight, but we feel good about our team and where we're at in the, in the season so far. We hosted 406 events last year at the Battery, and our vision was always built on creating a 365-day-a-year environment and bringing people there with their families, their friends, and to enjoy it, to live there, to work there. There's 5,500 employees now working on site on that 57-acre campus. I remember walking through there eight years ago when it was woods. And so we really have brought that, that area of Cobb to life and obviously Bill's, Bill's fiscal impact study, I mean, we're, we're proud of the fact that there's $34 million that were generated in that, that campus just last year. We opened a couple of different major tenants last year, TK Tower, the elevator test tower. We appreciate the county working with that and, and obviously that huge endeavor. All-in, that's about 600,000 square feet of space, both the 300,000 square foot office, the conference center, then the elevator test tower. There's about 600 TK employees that have come from all over North America. Papa John's moved their headquarters there from Louisville. They now occupy three floors of that building. And one of the great things about TK is when they're now up fully operational, they'll bring 10,000 visitors a year from all over North and South America to test those elevators, train on, and all their technicians at that site. So again, just adds, continues to build on the economic impact that we're able to create. And of course, we opened a bunch of new restaurants and last year, I feel really good about obviously what we were able to do through the pandemic. Again, appreciate Cobb and the state of Georgia. We never closed, we pivoted, we got really creative. We lost one tenant through, through the pandemic. And so it's a testament to just working with people and, and making sure that, as we said early on, we didn't want to hear the keys jingling at the end of the year. And, and that was a successful, successful objective that we were able to achieve. So coming in 2022, the year we're in right now, we're halfway through it obviously, but you saw the announcement probably six weeks ago that we are building another quarter million square foot office headquarters for Truist Securities. That's their, their North American operation for all their investment banking. Eventually, that will house over 1,000 employees and, and that will start going vertical in December of this year. We also have a number of new tenants that we've announced, Cultivate Coffee and Yoga Six, if you're into exercise, battle and brew, and we have another three tenants that we'll be announcing very shortly. And that will essentially fill up the space. We will have no more leasing space available at the Battery and, and it continues to add to our, our lineup. And then again, not getting over our skis, but I can speak for everyone at the Braves and I'm sure everyone here, we would love to repeat as, as world champions and have another great parade here in Cobb and create more of an impact for the future. I'd like to, to pivot here a little bit and just ask for your indulgence. One of the things that we've done recently is, I mean, there's obviously, you had questions about some of the, the financial funding of debt service and that. So we took it upon ourselves to, after five years now, to, sure, really, we want to understand the impact. And, and we have data and lots of information now to understand where fans come from all over the world. And, and, you know, nine million people, license plate readers and zip codes from everyone that buys tickets, so we have that data. And it was important for us to really, as I said, understand that impact. So when we started this project nine years ago, our aim was to not just create a new home for the Braves and a one-of-a-kind experience for fans and patrons. It was to build a partnership with Cobb County and to serve as a resource. We envisioned a destination that attracted people from across greater Atlanta 365 days a year. One that created life-changing job and career opportunities and helped to drive the economy into the future. Standing here today, I'm proud to say that we believe that vision has become a reality. Mr. Volkman reported a snapshot of the Battery's Atlanta's substantial economic impact. The tax revenue generated here funds vital services for Cobb residents far beyond the Battery. It helps our schools hire more teachers and purchase supplies. It serves as a cultural and philanthropic hub that has made a true impact. Today, we're releasing another study by renowned baseball economist Andrew Zimbalist, which further drives home the vital role the Battery plays now and in the future of Cobb County. Zimbalist's model examined expected revenues, extensive amounts of factual data, new investments, Cobb County expenses such as debt service and inflation, and he concludes that Truist Park and the Battery are a significant fiscal plus for the community. Truist Park was a, quote, "attractive investment for Cobb County taxpayers." He also shows that the economic activity from the Battery alone has boosted the entire local business ecosystem. The Braves are grateful for the incredible support you've had from Cobb County, and we do not take it for granted. We will always be committed to being transparent. Ideas and ways to collaborate with the county, the schools, nonprofits and other organizations are at the forefront of our priority. We want Cobb residents to know that the Battery is a resource that is contributing in a positive way to this community. So we're proud of being a part of this community. We think the best is yet to come, and certainly this report will focus only on what we generate at Truist Park and the Battery. We believe there's a, a massive halo effect that we've created. Again, the, the information's there, the numbers don't lie with all the thousands of additional residents that have been created, five Class A office buildings, and the list goes on and on around us. So I'm proud to just be able to leave with you today, and we'll be releasing this very soon. Later, copy of this report, Fiscal Impact, from Andrew Zimbalist. He's a world-renowned sports economist, and I think you'll find it enlightening and might take you back to school a little bit because it's, he's a Harvard professor that has done this for a living. But again, I think you'll find that this, this tells us a great story, that this has been a win-win for, for both organizations and the, and the county. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Also, could we have copies of all the slides that were presented today from county finance and the Braves? And is that a press release that is going out today, the report?
It is.
Okay. And will it be online that we can find it, or can you email it to us as well?
It'll be online, yes, yes.
Okay.
But I brought hard copies for you.
Oh, okay. That's fine. Do any of the board members have questions for Mr. Plant or Bill Volkman? Go ahead.
Yeah, I do just want to say, you know, this is, it was a massive project for the entire community. Lots of different things throughout that period. And certainly anyone that's been here for, you know, extended, in the county for an extended period of time can note on the positive impact of the development itself. But I do appreciate the specific oversight and, and delicacy that we treat this development with, both from the county side, because it is a major investment and so everyone is, are going to be critical, what it's, you know, need to really dig into the numbers to see what, what's actually going on, make sure that those expenses are being attributed to the right place. And so I really do appreciate the partnership in making sure that we can create that amount of transparency, the questions that come out of this board as well, and, you know, not being afraid to, to really dig into the numbers. So thank you for that.
You bet.
Thank you, Mike, for your presentation and the update. With respect to the report, can the general public access it on the Braves site? Is that where they can find, find the report?
I'm going to look to my colleague back here. Yes.
It will be on the Braves website?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, and thank you for your partnership with the county and good luck.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
And go Braves. Okay, now, Mr. Jimmy Geese, our deputy county manager, is going to explain the public hearing that we have and give you some details on this item.
Good morning, Commissioners, county, county manager. Prior to expending over $100,000 on consulting services, state law requires that a public hearing be held. Our item number five this morning is to ask that a public hearing do be held because we expect to expend over $100,000 on an organizational performance review and assessment evaluating the process and efficiencies of our Cobb County government. However, after we do conduct this public hearing, there is an item on consent, asking for the board to approve the top three ranked firms that we will, we're asking the board to pull at this time off of consent and to hold for a future meeting. However, since the public hearing has been advertised, we ask that the board do conduct the public hearing, and then should it come forward in the future, we will have already accomplished this task.
Thank you. So I believe that's item number 55?
55.
That will be pulled from consent when we get to that?
Yes, ma'am.
But because we had advertised this public hearing, and it's over $100,000 request, we will proceed with the public hearing. So anyone that's here to speak on the public hearing of $100,000 or more to perform an organizational performance review and assessment evaluating the processes, efficiencies and effectiveness of the Cobb County operations and services, you have three minutes and to speak to this item only. And please state your name.
I'm Jan Barton. Can you put it up? Two minutes, Jan. Sorry, we're getting the PowerPoint up. I'm here to say that we do not need an expensive, unnecessary consultant. We need to leverage the talented Cobb County management and staff instead and use prior studies such as from the Citizens Oversight Committee. The county has over 5,000 employees. We have talented, well-paid chairwoman, county manager, experienced HR and finance directors who can leverage those talents with the help of a strong HR management. There is no need for a consultant to tell you how to do that. This is just an example of how we're spending money with another consultant, the Deloitte contract, to tell us how to spend 147 million in ARPA funds will cost Cobb taxpayers 7.4 million over three years at $1,050 per hour, per month, just to tell us to divide funds equally between five areas. Why can't Cobb staff do that? The county doesn't need a consultant to tell them to look at the best performing governments for ideas and best practices such as using talented professional volunteers and properly prioritizing necessities like road maintenance. Look at the previous excellent work done by the Citizens Oversight Committee, many of which the county has not enacted. They looked at the organization, analyzed priorities and told of improvements that were needed. The county should establish a committee of business professional volunteers to do something similar to the Citizens Oversight Committee. They can help identify priorities. If the quality 5,000 Cobb County employees are properly directed and used, there is no need for a consultant. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. Next speaker.
Good morning, Christine Rosman. I'd like to just say that I totally agree with what Jan had to say. You have an amazing team of employees, very smart, and I'm assuming critical thinkers, and can transfer knowledge from something that you've spent money on before, use those same critical thinking skills and go assess something else. Because I think what happens is that the more money that we spend out there, we're getting influence out there, and that agenda that out there is saying, telling us what's right, is actually what's right for them or might, what might be right for the ARC or the Cobb Chamber or the consulting company that's going to keep getting these consulting fees. So I highly recommend that we stop spending money frivolously on that. Yes, these are, these are very important decisions. We have highly educated, highly paid people with PhDs. Are you going to have them that maybe have PhDs or master's degrees in things that are applicable to what face Cobb County on a regular basis? That would be money really well spent, because then you can invest in your staff instead of investing our money, our taxpayer money that we're funding, on somebody else's agenda for them to tell us what's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Craig Harfwood, and I, I can tell you about these studies, over 100,000. Right there, it's not transparent, because it's over a million usually, and it's not even, you know, saying that. And for example, I came to the ones when they were doing the Lower Roswell Road Study, and they were like, and the ones, 2005s plus. I mean, I came to these meetings before Bob Oat ever thought about running for commissioner. And right there, if you need a timeline and what's gone on and what I heard about the Braves and what they didn't do and all the projections that didn't happen, you know, you can tap us, you know. Been here 30 years. There's plenty of people with that qualification here. But on this study, the Lower Roswell Road Study, ends up, the one that they did for Gresham &amp; Associates- Gresham &amp; Associates, it's over a million dollars. And I just got to see it the other day, and it's horrible. I mean, it, it, they didn't address, the first thing you gotta do is get the business owners and the community members and talk about interparcial access, because, you know, all that turn lane mess that you want to put a median in, that isn't the end solution. There's two traffic lights. You gotta get on, basically...
Mr. Harfitt?
Cut this short. The thing is, the studies are a waste of money, a big waste of money. And consultants, you're well-paid, the county manager, the chairs are well-paid, and you know what? Just like when I got my first job and the economy's sort of rocking and rolling, it was a CETA job for Fulton County federal grant money. And basically, that's when they staffed this food stamp program with. And I got there, and it was mostly women social workers. A few years later, we had aeronautical engineers, a Methodist minister, teachers, you name it, all kinds of people out of work. And I'm telling you right now, there's graduates from UG, our colleges right here in the area with bachelor degrees in science and all kinds of things, and they can't find jobs. So, we need to recruit them under the guidance of county staff, and they can put these studies together. And it could be internships, work, summer work jobs, you know, basically that somebody is going around taking pictures of all the property, and I don't, somebody got a contract for that, you know? One guy gets paid a lot, all the little guys don't. But anyhow, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harfitt. Is there anyone else who would like to speak for this public hearing, to this subject only? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Giesi, do you have anything else?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
As long as you close it, we're good.
Okay. The public hearing is closed. Now, we'll move on to public comment, and each speaker has five minutes to address the board.
Thank you. As the board provides the podium for public comment, it's appropriate for us to, again, review the related meeting rules. Please state your name, and if you're speaking on behalf of an organization, all comments should be addressed through the chair. A public comment is not a dialogue with the board, but an opportunity for speakers to provide their comments to the board. The comments should not be impertinent, derogatory, offensive, or slanderous. To that end, the board encourages, regardless of the topic, for the audience to be respectful and courteous to the speakers. Everyone attending this meeting should give others the right to both listen and to be heard by treating others with civility. Statements made during the public comments portion do not necessarily reflect the opinions of the board or the administration of Cobb government. And as speakers come to speak, just a reminder that the podium has the tracker, the five-minute tracker, for you to keep track of your time. And the first public speaker is Jan Barton.
Hello again, Jan Barton. The county appears to have almost no accountability and limited transparency to taxpaying citizens. It's past time to get back to the basics. County infrastructure, roads, water, public safety, stick to low taxes, good schools, and roads without potholes. No more sidewalks and trails to nowhere, please. The county does not need to hire unnecessary, expensive consultants. Use county staff, potential volunteer professionals, and area students. County manager and chairwoman have full-time, well-paid jobs. Leverage current staff. Follow current land use plan and stop approving bad plans from developers represented by lawyers who contributed to commissioners' campaigns. With current critical staff shortages, it's our understanding that Chair Cupid authorized an increased hourly wages without going through the board. This is not what taxpaying Cobb homeowners want. Please get back to the basics. This Lower Roswell Road project is a disaster, as we told you in the in-person meeting this week, and thank you, Commissioner Richardson, Burrell, and DOT personnel for meeting with us. As we told you in that meeting, the taxpaying citizens do not want this horrible project. It raised its ugly head before 2005 and was pushed as a trail plan road diet from the Atlanta Regional Commission. It's so unpopular that two former commissioners did not choose to do it in over 15 years. This is another project that's an example of the county possibly not following zoning land use plans already in place. This is a high wall that is being proposed by the same lawyer that did the unpopular Shallowford Road-Johnson Ferry project. We're sick of lawyers like Kevin Moore getting away with this. The recent bad zoning decision, Johnson Ferry, is yet another example. This could be considered a conflict of interest. It's time to honor your oaths of office and represent the taxpaying homeowners of Cobb County. Stop the bad zoning decisions. Protect our single-family homes. Stop inserting more rentals which endanger our low taxes and good schools. This potential new hire is yet another example of not representing the taxpayers. The unnecessary, expensive, new position for an equity diversity director must be canceled. HR is already doing these things, supposedly. So, please, we're asking, please do your jobs. Do what Cobb home owning taxpayers want you to do. Please stop wasting our money. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barton.
The next speaker is Larry Savage.
Good morning, Commissioners. Several days ago, I had an occasion to attend a meeting that was hosted by, actually, Ms. Barton and some others, and was facilitated by Commissioner Richardson and Commissioner Burrell, and I appreciate their presence there. It had to do with the proposed project for Lower Roswell Road between Davidson Road and, I don't know, I forget the name of the, Shallow Woodlawn, that's it. This is, this thing goes back years. It has been studied and discussed and debated for years, and I mean like 15 or so, or 20 years, and it hasn't gotten off the ground. It's almost off the ground now, but the reason it hasn't gotten off the ground is, and I concluded this after the meeting, nobody really wants this. There isn't anybody who really is gonna benefit from it, except for the contractors and engineers, and nobody's defending it. It's gonna hurt a lot of people. You got things like, that give character to the community, like the restaurant there, the Mexican restaurant, which is a source of income for a family that has run it for years, very successfully, very popular place. I suspect they're gonna lose their business, because they're not gonna have any parking lot left when this is all over. There are other stories up and down the road. I don't even think this is a legitimate transportation project, and I'm gonna try to take my time here to tell you why I believe that. This is a generalized map, you can't really see much detail, of the Atlanta Regional Commission transportation, or bicycle transportation and pedestrian walkways plan. And this goes on and on. This is the regional plan from ARC for bike pad facilities and bike pad projects. It's been evolving for years now. And it became a political battle here in Cobb County about 2007. I live on Columns Drive down by the river, and we had literally a war zone between homeowners and a bunch of hostile bicycle enthusiasts who liked to come down there and ride on that street for unique properties of the street, I'll say. And it got to the point, literally, of hostility. There were people making threats of harm to other people over this. The commissioner at the time, Joe Thompson, sponsored an ordinance that was enacted by the Board of Commissioners that attempted to regulate in some fashion the bicycle riding on Columns Drive. You know, people were actually riding for a time, you know, to see how fast they could make the lap and all that sort of thing. And this is in an environment where other people are trying to walk or run in the same space. So, Thompson enacted, or had this enacted, and came under fire from some of the bicycle enthusiasts. This sounds crazy, trust me, it really happened. And they decided that they would get behind Bob Ott and try to run Joe Thompson out of office. Well, Joe Thompson did get beat, and Bob got elected. I don't know how much influence the bicyclist had, but they think they had a lot. So then, we moved forward a little bit, and here we've got, that Bob was, I think, that was a 2008 election. So here we are, January 27, 2009. Adoption of policy regarding complete streets concept for improved safety and accessibility to Cobb County's transportation systems for all citizens. Motion by Olens, second by Ott, adopted unanimously. This has gotta be the best thing that ever happened to the contractors and engineers who worked with Cobb County, because immediately, all of their business was doubled, because every project that was a road project is now supposed to have sidewalks and bike trails included in it, by policy adopted by the Board of Commissioners. Bike trails are an amenity, a recreational amenity. Now, that's a great recreational amenity. I have a bike, I'm afraid to ride it. I don't think it's safe to ride over the street on a bicycle personally. But we have this project here that has been introduced and developed over the years as a safety and operational improvement. It is not a safety and operational improvement. It has done very little for travel on the road, it's gonna do very little, it's going to hinder travel in the new section that's under study now by the presence of a median, and the documentation on the safety element is almost nonexistent. The documentation on the safety improvement with this road is based upon a formula from the DOT in Washington. There have been 61 accidents...
Mr. Savage, I'm sorry, your time's up.
All right. 61 accidents in the proposed zone. A rational person could spend less than a day and go through those accident files...
The next public speaker is Christine Rosman.
Or would not be affected.
Mr. Savage, your time is up, I'm sorry.
I'm saying they would not.
Thank you, Christine Rosman, speaking on behalf of myself. I have this, my, one of my favorite quotes is, "Your actions speak so loudly I can't hear what you're saying." And when it comes to zoning, I think that quote is really applicable. Back in the fall, when there were many of us that were saying, hey, we don't want Z-72, that North Point-Josh project, and the citizens rallied, a bunch of other citizens, people called in, showed up, I think it was very good turnout, and people called in to vote, and 90-plus persons called or were here to say, no, we don't want this project. And then, the church and had a lot of their folks, young, probably 20-something, maybe 30-something, and they voted, there were maybe 30 of them, and then they voted yes for it. So, we don't even know if they even live in Cobb County, you know, if they do, they might live in, you know, with their parents or something. And that vote ended up unanimously going for that zoning. And so, it's kind of like, well, wait, if we're telling you what we want, why is it that we're not heard? And that's very important to be heard, because we're the taxpayers. This is where all these funds come to do this, you know? You're forgetting who's paying the bills. So, anyway, so now we have this, since that was Josh for Johnson Ferry-Shallowford, now we have the Joe Low Row, which is the Johnson Ferry Lower Roswell project, and I guess, something was sent out, but I believe my friend Jan went and talked to all the business owners, and they had no idea about it. In fact, like, none of the citizens knew anything about it. So, she was able to, thank you for getting, agreeing to not do a Zoom and actually do an in-person, and with just like a day of making calls and stuff, 40 people in the middle of the day, at 1:00 in the afternoon, show up for a meeting, and it probably would have been three times that amount if it were after hours, because that whole plan, that kind of Agenda 21, 2030 plan of making it real urban and kind of cool, and like, looking like the rest of Atlanta, what the ARC is kind of pushing, that's not really what the citizens want. And so, I just, just want to say that, you know, if you're supposed to be doing, making, marking things for zoning, that we're going to zone and do this, and this is going to impact people, hey, you're gonna be spending $9 million in a couple of years on this project, and they don't know anything about it. Plus, making that kind of money outlay commitment to finances, to construction, let's face it, our economy is on the dive right now, so I would recommend putting this one on hold for a while, because the way the market is going, and if like moms can't even get formula for their kids, and we have these open borders down, you know, in the southern border, and we have no idea who's coming over, other than that there are a whole lot of military-aged men that are pretty buff, and we don't know where they're going, these are gonna be other issues that are really going to impact Cobb County. Because when you have that many, where they say, it's like, oh, it's hundreds of thousands, it's like, let's face it, it's millions, that's what's really going to, to really start affecting us. And so, I, again, there's a disconnect between what you all are saying, what the constituents want, and I know there's a, there's something near my neighborhood on sandy plains and scuffle grit. Initially, it was gonna be single-family homes, or like, great, that looks nice, you know, it would be, that would be a great addition. Now I find out that the wall has been built bigger, and now it's gonna be like a nursing home or something? Like, where'd that come from?
Ms. Rosman?
Where was that a word?
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Mr. Harfitt?
Good morning again, Commissioners. My name's Craig Harfitt, and what I wanted to talk, it's about transparency. The Braves' deal that you were questioning the man about, not transparent. And I was sitting here in the room when they were saying, oh, the bonds in the hotel motel tax would pay them, and the car rental extra thing would cover them, and the finance guy was up here saying, yeah, it's good. It wasn't. And the thing is, it's a national joke that we gave away everything to the Braves organization for them to make this move. The stadiums in Atlanta that got built and rebuilt and all, they never paid the bonds off on them. They just went from one to the other, and then they jump up here. They had to eat it. We're gonna have to eat it. Next thing I wanted to talk about is the, that Lower Roswell project. You should declare it not feasible, infeasible is the way you term it, you use for the term, because you didn't do anything once the money was collected back in 2016? But, and Bob Ott, even the guy that was, hey, I'm spandex bike rider, he didn't do it. So, and it's not just Tijuana Joe's. Oh, this ramps into the, oh, they got Papa John's in the corporate tower. Well, the Papa John's on the other street across from Tijuana Joe's is a corporate-owned Papa John's. They won't have no parking lot. And then the new people that just put the bagel joint in, they won't have nothing. And that's... And that dental place, they haven't been able to get that to go yet. And it's been through several, you know, owners and tried to use it, doesn't fly. And when I drove here through Marietta, you can say you got money here from the Braves, but Marietta looks worse as far as vacancies. And I had friends that had businesses in some of those shopping centers coming into Marietta. And they were like flea markets, you know, resale, furniture and all. Can't even support that anymore. I mean, goodwill, you got to give everybody the goods. And the guy just bought up the Sparkles skating rink, we're right there at Park Air. And so his business model is, give us the goods free, we'll give some people minimum wage jobs and I get to buy real estate and it's a tax, you know, nonprofit. So, I mean, things are not going well. And then no-interest loans. And I came and talked to Sam, you know, I was telling him a year before the bubble busted in 2008, it's a bubble. You can't just go around reassessing people just because the banks dropped the interest rates down to 1%, 2%. And suddenly you say, oh, the taxes are all up. They're not up. It's just everyone thinks, they can buy something with, they got X amount of dollars to spend. And if the mortgage says they can spend it, they do. And then when you see what, you know, when you print money, the Fed doesn't count food or energy. And the reason for that is, that's, you inflate energy, it triples, no, 10 times what the end-up cost of food is. And then you got the taxes. And then people can't pay their mortgages, well, they're going to eat first, they're going to get to their job and keep trying to do that, and that's when the whole thing falls apart. And we're going to have it again. And it's going to happen quick. If they do something to make it longer, we will have the Great Depression if they push it some years down the road. But don't think you've got a budget just because some people sold some houses, you know, basically in my neighborhood, they were 210, 220, and it was around 17 to 18 that I watched the guy that tried to sell it right up to them for, in the threes, couldn't sell it, sells it, and the next minute, COVID. And then people with no jobs, buying houses, speculating, spinning them up, trying to flip them. There's three houses on Lower Roswell, they tried to rent out, they couldn't rent them out. With higher taxes thrown on this year, they sure can't rent them out. So-
Mr. Harford, your time is up, Mr. Harford. Thank you. Commissioner, that concludes the public speaking portion of this part of the meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. So now the consent agenda will be scrolling on the screen. And also at the end of the meeting, and it is online, before we make a motion on the consent agenda, there were a couple of items that have been withdrawn from this agenda. And one is Public Safety Police, number 35, the agreement between Cobb Police Department and Clearview Alabama, Inc., for facial recognition services. And the other one is item number 55, has been withdrawn to request to approve the three top-ranked consultants to perform an organizational performance review and assessment. And that was the public hearing that we had earlier, but that item has been withdrawn from this agenda. So if you need a few minutes to look over the consent agenda, or is it still just scrolling?
It was scrolling before the meeting and it's right for a motion at this point in time.
Okay. So I will make a motion to approve the following items on the consent agenda as revised and authorize the execution of the necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel.
Second.
All in favor? And the motion passes 4-0 with the chairwoman absent. And Chief Register, would you please present item number 57?
Okay. Well, good morning, Commissioners and Madam Co-Chair. Sheriff's Department, we have two items this morning, and the first is to authorize the purchase of approximately 30 vehicles with the Cobb County Sheriff's Office as part of the 2016 SPOSS program. Purchasing these vehicles will help us address our aging fleet. We still have about 47 vehicles that have excessive miles on them. It'll be a, they will be replacement vehicles, a swap, one for one. And it also addresses our issues with the supply chain. It's very hard to find vehicles these days and we were able to find these vehicles with a company, Brandon Motor Company. So we're asking the Board of Commissioners to authorize the purchase of approximately 30 vehicles from sole source vendor, Brandon Motor Company, at an amount not to exceed 1.1 million, and authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents. And again, this funding will be from the 2016 SPOSS.
I will make a motion to approve item number 57.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. Motion carries 4-0 with the chairwoman absent.
Okay, thank you. The second item is to authorize a purchasing agreement with Energy Solutions for the replacement and installation of light fixtures at the Cobb County Adult Detention Center. Again, this will be a 2016 SPOSS funding request. The light fixtures are to replace the light fixtures that are in two buildings, specifically Building 84 and Building 97. And those designations come from the year that the building was built. When building was built in 1984, when building was built in 1997, and the light fixtures have not been replaced or modernized since then. And also, the current light fixtures are not tamper-proof. Not only will this, not only will this modernize the light fixtures, but it will also be tamper-proof lighting. Right now, the inmates have found a way to manipulate the lighting system to start small fires and even light cigarettes. And so this will mitigate that hazard. We're asking the Board of Commissioners to authorize a purchasing agreement with Energy Solutions, bid 22-6653, for the replacement installation of detention-grade, tamper-resistant light fixtures at the Cobb County AC Buildings 8497, for an amount not to exceed $419,980, and authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairwoman to execute necessary documents.
Motion to approve item number 58.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. Motion carries 4-0 with the-
All right. Well, thank you, Commissioners, Madam Co-Chair and County Manager.
Good morning, Commissioners, True Ressler, Department of Transportation. DOT has 11 items for your consideration this morning. Our first item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve project number X-2548, Task Order Number Two, to the 2020 Master Task Order Contract with Kimmy Horn and Associates, Incorporated, in amount not to exceed $64,891 for transportation planning services related to traffic calming strategies. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Advanced Sports Construction LLC, in amount not to exceed $277,721 for drainage system repairs on Rail Splitter Drive, project number B-2202. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
And this is in District Three, so I will make a motion to approve item number 60.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Chatfield Contracting, Incorporated, in amount not to exceed $147,399 for drainage system repairs on Rockcrest Court, project number B-2224. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Motion to approve item number 61.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you.
This is my last one.
Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number Two Final to the project number D-2874, to the 2021 Countywide Unit Price Contract with Chatfield Contracting, Incorporated. The savings to the project in the amount of $89,497.01 for emergency drainage system repairs on Perkwood Chase. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number One Final to the project number D-2873, to the 2021 Countywide Unit Price Contract with DNH Construction Company, Incorporated, in amount not to exceed $15,546.49 for drainage system repairs on Old Soul Road. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Richardson.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve project number B-2103, Task Order Number One, to the 2020 Master Task Order Contract with Heath and Lineback Engineers, Incorporated, in amount not to exceed $240,925 for preliminary engineering design of James Road over Pine Creek. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve project number B-2601, Task Order Number Two, to the 2020 Master Task Order Contract with CDM Smith, Incorporated, in amount not to exceed $130,413 for preliminary engineering design of Ewing Road Sidewalk. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Call the question.
Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve project number B-2301, Task Order Number One, to the 2020 Master Task Order Contract with Southeastern Engineering, Incorporated, in amount not to exceed $195,140 for preliminary engineering design of intersection improvements on Old Stilesborough Road at County Line Road. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Gamble.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve project number B-2302, Task Order Number One, to the 2020 Master Task Order Contract with Low Engineers, LLC, in amount not to exceed $210,755 for preliminary engineering design of intersection improvements on Dewes Road at Antioch Road. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Gamble.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. I know this is going to be a well-expected and anticipated project in the county. We will be doing community meetings about the proposed changes when it comes time.
Absolutely. We'll begin with concept development, which will include a traffic study and some recommended alternatives, and then subsequently a public meeting.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Call the question. Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a cost-share agreement with Winnie Hill Self-Storage LLC, MTC Corporation, and Concord Wilshire Capital LLC for Old Leland Stormwater Remediation, project number X-22115, and authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Richardson.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. And our final item this morning, I have the pleasure of presenting on behalf of DOT, as well as Water System, Parks, Fleet and Property Management. On behalf of the respective departments, the volume of vacancies within those departments has strained the ability to maintain and operate critical public infrastructure throughout the county. And with that, to the right page, these departments recommend the Board of Commissioners authorize a frontline retention incentive for retaining frontline field staff responsible for maintaining and operating critical public infrastructure, in amount not to exceed $636,000 funded from ARPA contingency funding. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
I will make the motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? We did have some robust discussion yesterday at Agenda Work Session, and you did a very good explanation and answered, I think, everyone's questions. So if there's not any other discussion, I'll call the question. Motion carries 4-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Brantley, it's your turn.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners, Madam Deputy Manager. Our first item is for the Board to approve Change Order Number One Final to the contract with Licti Commercial Construction, Incorporated, for Nesbit Union Chapel Steel Framing, under the 2016 Park SPOSS Program, representing a $9,000 credit to the project. We ask that Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number One Final to the contract with Licti Commercial Construction, Incorporated, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. Commissioner Gamble.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. Motion carries 4-0.
Our second final item this morning is to approve a purchase order with Outdoor Aluminum, Incorporated, for materials and labor to provide mobile bleachers for the Covered Arena at Jim R. Miller Park. The 2016 Park SPOSS Program includes infrastructure and related improvements associated with the completion of the approved master plan at Jim R. Miller Park.
Commissioner Sheffield.
Current mobile bleachers have outlived, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry. I thought you were, never mind, keep going.
I'll try to go quicker, I'm sorry. The current mobile bleachers have outlived their service life and need to be replaced. Cow Parks received a proposal from Outdoor Aluminum for four sets of mobile bleachers in amount not to exceed $82,640. This proposal complies with the terms and discounts available under TIPS USA Contract Number 2008-0101. TIPS USA Purchasing Cooperative utilizes a process that competitively bids unit pricing on an annual basis and makes such pricing available to local governments. We ask the Board of Commissioners to approve purchase order with Outdoor Aluminum, in an amount not to exceed $82,640 for materials and labor to provide the mobile bleachers at Covered Arena at Jim R. Miller Park. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the purchasing director to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you, Mr. Brantley, and I apologize for the interruption.
That's okay.
Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Call the question. Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you.
Mr. Stalcup is here for Property Management.
Good morning, Madam Vice Chairwoman, Commissioners, County Manager. Property Management has one item this morning. Property Management would like to request the Board of Commissioners approve the project agreement with Controlled Access, Inc., in the amount of $58,125 for the installation of the county's enterprise access control and video surveillance system for the Sheriff's Office South Annex located at 5786 Old Gordon Road, formerly 5801 Mapleton Parkway. This is a 2016 SPOSS project X-1070-M, and also authorize a 10% contingency in the amount of $58,812.50. of $58,812.50, and authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute necessary documents.
Thank you. Commissioner Gamble. Sheffield, sorry.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Call the question. Any discussion, I mean, call the question. Motion carries four.
Thank you.
Good morning.
I'm sorry.
No, you're all right.
We have an item, one item from the Fire Department?
Correct. Good morning, Commissioners, County Manager. We have one item to authorize the expenditure of the 2016 Splot Funding Program X 1050-U for replacement end-of-useful-life exercise equipment used by firefighters at the Fire Train and Administration Classroom Building. The Public Safety Training Center project was approved in the 2016 Special Local Option Sales Tax Program in a general election held on November 4, 2014. The fire training facility is eligible capital improvement project program under the 2016 Splot as approved project for the public safety improvement. Cobb County 2016 Splot, Page 28, which provides for improvement to facilities and equipment. Therefore, recommend that the Board of Commissioners authorize the expenditure of 2016 Splot Funding Program X 1050-U in the amount of $57,069.10 for exercise equipment to replace end-of-useful-life equipment at the Fire Train Administration Classroom Building located at 2109 Fowler Drive. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the purchasing director to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. Commissioner Gamble.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. Motion carries four.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, the next item from the county manager is being pulled. So next we have public, the second set of public comment.
Item 74.
Pardon?
Say it again.
I'm sorry.
Is it item 74?
Oh, well, 74 in my book says to approve a contract with Accenture LLP to prepare a strategic plan, and that's what I just said was pulled.
Just say item 74.
Okay, item 74 has been pulled from the regular agenda. I thought I did say that.
Item number 75 is under the Appointments tab, which comes after the public comment.
75 is an appointment. I'm on 74.
Which has been pulled.
Right, and that's what I announced initially. Did I say 75 instead of 74?
You said the county manager's item has been pulled.
Right.
It's listed directly to the particular item number 74 for the public to understand what that item is.
Right. Item number 74 from the county manager has been pulled from the agenda. Let's move on here. Do we have a second set of public comment?
No, we do not.
Well.
I didn't even fill out the six. I wanted to talk to you at the end. It'd be easier to do it like this.
So, Mr. Harfut?
Mr. Harfut, he has five minutes.
And you have five minutes, sir.
Thank you. Now, I appreciate this because I didn't get to it, but anyhow, I was doing a study of Jacksonville compared to Cobb County for representation, and in 1968, Cobb County, or Jacksonville became, they consolidated the cities into one, and it became basically Duval County is Jacksonville. And they have about 900,000 people, we got 750. So I was comparing the representation because I'm looking like you all, each of you, four of you represent 189,163 people. There, they have 19 members on the Board of Commissioners, and Mayor Strong, not a chair, but a mayor, and they have a county manager. But, you know, with this whole cityhood thing, and everybody's saying lower taxes, and, you know, and I think in Vining's, they were just trying to make it about zoning, you know, they didn't want to do nothing but zoning. And what I'm thinking is, to save money for everybody, why aren't we thinking like that? And if the cities want to stay the cities, we still need more board members. For every city that didn't happen, we need a board member. Because I'm looking at what you just did the consent agenda on, 360 pages. I don't know how you could go through it in a day. And I mean, there's stuff on there that I would call transparency issues, you know, like fixing a pothole or something. Ah, that's easy, you know, yeah, fix it. It's usually under $100,000. But the big-ticket items, like these studies, I mean, they're the blind spot, and it's like, we don't even know who's doing it. But when people retire from the board and then they become consultants and tell you how to do business with the county, that was the biggest thing. For years I came, and nobody said that it was a million dollars. I couldn't get that out of anybody. I got it, somebody was, you know, it was Kelly, the DOT, Matthews. But I talked to her, and I asked her, did she go to Leadership Cobb? Because I looked into going to that long ago, and they said, oh, you got to have a sponsor. And she said, yeah, Arcata sponsored it. She's an Arcata's employee. So it gets even more, you're dependent on county staff, and yet they're the contractors that are hidden in these $100,000 studies that, you know, we don't really know if they're millions, and we don't know, you know, it's like wagging the dog. I mean, you depend on it, you're part-time, you've got 200,000 people, few of them are in your ear, but we're suing Bank of America because of what Sam Owens did just before he left office. He said, the banks aren't good, and this is when they did TARP in 2008, and I was telling him it was coming a year before, and he said, we're going to let the banks not pay us, we're going to, you know, just let them pay the interest on it when they unwind them. And it took till 2015 to unwind them. And then when there wasn't any money because the values didn't really go up like they thought they would go up, like even the bond projections for the stadium, you can say things are going to happen, but when the Fed, when they go to Iraq and they print money, and it goes, it just all ties back in about elder abuse. Seniors on fixed incomes trying to live in their home, and the cost of living, Social Security, it never kept up, even since when I did food stamps in the 70s. It's the elders that get crushed, and the only thing they can sell is their house, but they can spend out of that house. It happened to my mother. But it's like you, and the cost of care in an assisted-living home, it's way beyond anybody's income that is of that age, and, you know, if they're especially 80s to 90s, their income wasn't that high, and there's no way they could ever keep up. So basically, all this stuff about reassessment and looking like you've got a budget because some houses in my area, somebody signed on the line and paid 100,000 more than they were worth, when that comes back, just like it did in 2008, you've got to be thinking about, how are you going to deal with these banks? Are they?
Mr. Harfut?
I appreciate it.
Save your time.
This is.
Mr. Harfut, you should save your time. Thank you. Chairwoman, that concludes the secret portion of the public meeting.
Thank you. Okay, now we will move on to appointments, and item number 75 has been revised to approve an appointment. Commissioner Sheffield.
I approve the appointment of Demetrius Lockett to the Recreation Board, and he will replace Kealan Mitchell, who has served the county for a greater part of five years, and he has moved on to the next chapter of his life with he and his wife, our owners of Muyah Burger in Mabelton, so they're pursuing that effort full-time. But I'd just like to thank Kealan on behalf of the county for his service.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes four to zero.
And the next item?
The next item is to approve another appointment from Commissioner Richardson.
Motion to approve the appointment of David Blinkhorn to the Cemetery Preservation Commission. Second.
Yeah, we will. I have a second. Any discussion? Call the question. Motion carries four zero. Can we take a five-minute break before Commissioner address and the public hearing? Would someone else like to run the meeting for a minute?
Sure. That'd be fine. We have to take a couple of minutes.
Just five minutes is all on. Thank you. Thank you. We will now reconvene with Commissioners' public address, and we'll start with Commissioner Gamble.
Thank you. The UGA Cobb Extension Register for Summer Fun. Instructor Zoe and her class had so much fun earlier this month learning about canning and making strawberry jam. And in case you missed this class, there are other opportunities, including pickled green beans, pepper jelly, and other food preservations this summer. Classes are held at our Cobb County Extension Office, and you can register at the office or by calling 770-528-4070. You can join us next week for our Department Dunk on Wednesday, June 22nd, from 11:00 to 2:00 p.m. This event is an employee appreciation event, and we will also be honoring our seniors who are 55 and plus. Whether you've played before or you are a complete beginner, join us for a fun morning of disc golf. You can meet... Or, I'm sorry, we will be meeting at 10:00 to noon on Thursday, June 16th, at Oregon Park located at 145 Old Hamilton Road Northwest in Marietta. You can wear comfortable clothing, and there will be a lot of walking, so come prepared. Registration is required, and you can do so at 770-528-8200. Juneteenth reflects the progress of African-Americans' freedoms and rights on levels of equality. Did you know the official Juneteenth flag was red, white, and blue, displaying that all American slaves and their descendants were Americans? However, you will often see the Pan African flag, which is red, black, and green. These colors represent the blood, soil, and prosperity of Africa and its people. We will have events in Kennesaw with Kennesaw Police, it's One Community, Acworth Juneteenth Celebration, and Powder Springs' Juneteenth Celebration, and the Unity Walk, in addition to the Juneteenth Celebration here on Marietta Square. More information is available in my newsletter and on the county website, so be sure to subscribe. And lastly, Happy Father's Day. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Richardson?
Busy time, and certainly it was a busy last weekend, too. But coming up, of course, Happy Father's Day, Happy Pride Month, Happy Juneteenth. A lot to celebrate all across the board, but also last weekend was Wear Orange, so a lot of... We had a lot of participation in that, and also attended a Smyrna Juneteenth Event over the past weekend. So be on the lookout for all types of things coming up and happening this month, but just a little bit there. Tonight, from the office, tonight is the last Sustainability Environmental Advocacy Project Stakeholders' Meeting. Yes, it's a mouthful, that's why we say "seep," before we move on to our Environmental Justice Agreement workshops with the community. And tonight's meeting will be featuring our very own KCP, Keep Cobb Beautiful. We hope to see you online at 7:00 p.m. It's a great chance to learn about all the things that KCP does in the community currently and what their aspirations are for the future. Acts of Kindness is also coming up. This Saturday, we'll be hosting our June Acts of Kindness Event, a women's self-defense class, which, you know, was the most popular one last year, and so far it's shaping up to be pretty popular this year. The class will be taught by ACT Women's Self-Defense, owned by my Veterans Cabinet member, Veterans Affairs Cabinet Member Dan Heidrick. Last year was a great success. We expect this year to be even better. Please do register, and we'll be tying it a little bit broader. Last year, it was specifically on domestic violence, and this year, we'll make it a little bit broader because we understand we're going through a lot in the community with regards to gun safety and all the different initiatives around that space. So self-defense is the tie-along for this. Scholarships for East Cobb Area Students. Students may apply for a diversity scholarship made available through the Life Skills Outreach Ministry at Mount Zion United Methodist Church. Five scholarships of $1,000 each will be awarded for the 2022-2023 school year. The Racial Unification Team is seeking to demonstrate compassion for historically marginalized populations by giving out these scholarships. Scholarship is for continuing education at college or technical school level for members of historically marginalized populations who reside in Eastern Cobb County, Sprayberry, Wheeler, Lassiter, Pope, Kel, and Walton High School footprints. The deadline is tomorrow, June 15th. You can find the application at the QR code, and hopefully I spoke slowly enough, long enough, for you to take a picture if you wanted to. concludes all of my announcements.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sheffield?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. District Four News and Updates. As summer gets underway, Happy Helpings Georgia Summer Food Service Program will provide meals to children free of charge at three of our Cobb County Public Libraries. The food will be distributed through drive-through services at the following libraries. Switzer, Switzer Library located at 266 Roswell Street in Marietta. South Cobb Regional Library located at 805 Clay Road in Mableton. And at the North Cobb Regional Library located at 3535 Old 41 Highway in Kennesaw. For more information and times, please visit www.happyhelpingsgeorgia.com or www.cobbcat.org. Cobb County is currently accepting... Hold on, wrong narrative. Okay. Attention, all small business owners. Comcast Rise is now accepting applications for the next round of grants through their Comcast Rise Investment Fund. Applicants can receive up to $10,000 in monetary grants. Eligibility requirements are as follows. Established business operations for three or more years. Twenty-five or less full-time and part-time employees. And at least 51% owned and operated by someone who identifies as a person of color or a woman. Today is the last day to apply, so interested parties should apply at ComcastRise.com. Okay, here we go. Cobb County is currently accepting applications for grants through the federal government's ARPA Plan. The federal government allocated $147 million to Cobb County. Application submissions will aid the county to facilitate a strategic recovery for communities from the pandemic. We will host two informational webinars on June 16th at 4:30 p.m. And again on June 27th at 6:00 p.m. to discuss the application process. The application deadline is September 9th. For more information, visit cobbcounty.org/ARPA. The City of Powder Springs is bringing free live music to the Springs. The monthly summer concert series will begin on June 25th at the Hardy Family Amphitheater Stage in Thurman Springs Park located in downtown Powder Springs. The concerts will provide great music, a variety of food trucks, and tons of fun. For information, visit cityofpowdersprings.org. Please join me in our Park Director for Community Town Hall for the long-awaited Milford Osborne Recreation Center. The proposed center has been years in the making, and we are excited to meet with the residents of the area and provide input on the desired amenities and design for the recreation center. Our first town hall meeting will be held on June 29th at 6:30 p.m. at Jim Miller Park located at 2245 Callaway Road in Marietta. Your input will be critical to the success of the recreation center. I hope to see you there. This is a weekend of celebration, and it kicks off with events throughout the county for Juneteenth. Please visit the county's website for Juneteenth events. We celebrate Juneteenth because this day commemorates the emancipation of enslaved people in the aftermath of the Civil War. Although slaves were declared free under the terms of the 1862 Emancipation Proclamation, it wasn't until June 19th, 1865, that the announcement proclaiming freedom for enslaved people in Texas was delivered. The county offices will be closed on Monday, June 20th, in observance of the holiday. And finally, Sunday is Father's Day. Fathers... Happy Father's Day to all fathers, stepdad, father figures. Enjoy your day, Dad. Know that you are appreciated and loved.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you, Commissioner Sheffield. Now for the District Three updates. I'd first like to say happy birthday to Rose. Rose is the district attorney's therapy dog, but her handler Angela has agreed to bring her over to the third floor for our therapy on a regular basis. She... I've kind of adopted Rose, and she turned three last week, and I was out of town, so I wasn't here to celebrate her birthday, but we want to recognize her and thank her for all her hard work. Advanced voting for the June 21st general primary runoff is happening in many locations across the county. Mark, please make your way back to the polls for this very important election. And you can go to cobbcounty.org/elections for a list of all the locations throughout the county that are open through Friday this week, and also if you're interested in being a poll worker. Next slide. Happy birthday to the U.S. Army. Today, we join the celebration of the U.S. Army Birthday, June 14th, as we remember its creation in 1775. The Army originally consisted of volunteer soldiers with roots to the Continental Army and was formed to fight the Revolutionary War. Today is the largest branch of the U.S. Military. The proud men and women of the U.S. Army continue to provide peace and security for all of us. God bless our troops. And also, today is Flag Day. This celebration of the American flag occurs each year on the anniversary of the flag's official adoption, June 14th. What we know fondly as the Stars and Stripes was adopted by the Continental Congress as the official American flag on June 14th, 1777 amid the Revolutionary War. Colonial troops fought under many different flags with various symbols. A resurfacing project on Sandy Plains, on East Piedmont, from Allgood to Sandy Plains, will begin tonight. This is a long-awaited project. A couple of years ago, we resurfaced East Piedmont from Roswell Road to Allgood, which is District Two. And with the 2022 splash, we now have the funding to move forward for the completion of that resurfacing segment from Allgood to Sandy Plains. So be careful, expect delays, and work is expected to be completed by August of this year. The Cobb Veterans Memorial has a list of upcoming events that you don't want to miss. This one is Craft for a Cause Beer and Barbecue, June 26th, from 2:00 to 6:00 at Dry County Brewing Company, Lockhart Drive in Kennesaw. We'd like for you to support them, and it's an effort to raise money to build the memorial. There are also other events coming up. June 18th, from 5:00 to 10:00, U.S. Army 247th Birthday Celebration at Semper Fi Bar and Grill in Woodstock. Monday, July 4th, the Marietta Square Parade, which begins at 10:00 with festivities. Cobb Veterans Memorial will share a table with the Georgia Vietnam Veterans Association near the bandstand in the park, in Glover Park. And then also on August 19th is the First Annual Concert. Concerts and cocktails, 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Cowan Historic Mill in Acworth. So please join in. You can go to cobbveteransmemorial.com for more information. This weekend, we'll be celebrating Juneteenth around the county. It is a holiday celebrating the day when Union Army finally freed the last African-American slaves held in Confederate States on June 19th, 1865. There are several celebrations taking place this weekend, and there's a list down at the bottom. And please note that county offices will be closed on Monday, June 20th, in observance of Juneteenth, federal holiday. Again, Happy Father's Day to all the fathers out there, and we wish you all the best, and it's time to spoil your dad or granddad or any of the fathers out there on their special day. And then to stay updated for new... Please sign up for our newsletter, my newsletter, cobbcounty.org/burl. Thank you. And now, Mr. Rowland and Mr. Hensley, I will call on you for the hearing.
And just to let the board know, item number 77 is an item from Community Development, which is regarding an appeal hearing to determine whether there was due cause from the License Review Board to deny an application for alcohol permit. The hearing is scheduled to go forward today. However, Mr. Hensley would be representing the county at this point in time, but he has spoken with the applicant, and I think he has some news that he needs to relay regarding that.
Thank you, and good morning, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners, Madam County Manager, and Mr. County Attorney. For the record, I am Sam Hensley, Jr. I am the attorney for the Cobb County License Review Board and Business License Division. I haven't had the pleasure of appearing before some of you until now. We haven't had a hearing like this in quite a while, so it's a pleasure to be here. As Mr. Rowling indicated, let me preface this by saying, we are going to be asking for a continuance in this hearing, and we'll explain why here very shortly. But a couple of procedural matters here. The applicant is here. She does not speak English. She speaks Nepali. She has an interpreter with her who is not a state-certified interpreter. So first order of business will be to get this interpreter approved, if that is the board's pleasure, to translate these proceedings so that the applicant understands what we're doing, and so that she can come forward and explain why she is asking for a continuance in this hearing. So what I would like to do is swear in all the witnesses right now, and then I will call this individual forward to interview her very briefly about her qualifications to interpret, so that everyone is fully understanding what the proceedings are here today. With your leave, Madam Vice Chair. If you're going to be testifying in this hearing, or believe you may be testifying, would you please stand and raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before this proceeding shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, say, "I do." Please be seated. Thank you. Madam Chair, the interpreter's name is Esther Baznet, and I'm going to ask her to come forward to the lectern right now for a few brief questions. Could you please state your full name for the record?
My name is Esther Baznet.
And are you a state-certified interpreter, Ms. Baznet, in the language of Nepali?
I'm not a state-certified interpreter.
Could you please tell the board your qualifications and experience in regard to being a Nepali interpreter?
I have been screened by the courts in Georgia to interpret in the court in Georgia, and I also interpret for courts in Kentucky, Chicago, and Texas.
And do you believe that you can faithfully interpret for Ms. Sunita Karke, who is the applicant here today?
Yes, I can.
If there are no questions from the board, I would administer an oath at this time, but please feel free, if you need to, ask her any questions, because I would like the board to, if it is your pleasure, to vote to accept this individual as an interpreter for these proceedings, since she is not a state-certified interpreter.
Are there any questions? Okay.
So at this time, I think I would entertain a motion to allow her to interpret for these proceedings. At this point, just the motion to allow her to proceed as the interpreter. Just motion a second for that.
I will move that we approve this interpreter and allow you to proceed. What the hearing? Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. Motion approved, four zero.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will make an accurate, complete, and impartial interpretation from English language into Nepali and vice versa, to the best of your abilities, skill, and judgment? If so, say, "I do."
I do.
Thank you very much. If you don't mind returning to the licensee. So very briefly, Madam Vice Chair, I had a conversation with the applicant while the rest of the meeting was going on in the lobby. She indicated that... She indicated that she has an attorney who is representing her, a Mr. Kenneth Hunter, who is not here today. There was a representative purportedly from Mr. Hunter's office who was with him, but he is not an attorney. I informed this individual, Leon Humphreys, that he could not speak on behalf of the applicant because he's not an attorney. That would constitute the unauthorized practice of law, which he fully agreed with. He said he was merely here in an advisory capacity for the applicant. But she indicated that she did have an attorney. There was an attorney, a previous attorney, Alvin Button, who appeared to assist her with the filing of her appeal of the administrative denial of this application prior to the License Review Board hearing, which was conducted back in March. But he did not represent the applicant at that particular hearing. So the result of all my discussions with these individuals, and her husband is here as well, and he's part of the substantive issue that we'll get into later, I was not comfortable proceeding with this hearing without her being fully informed as to the legal issues, the potential consequences of this hearing, and the information that would need to be imparted to this board for you to even consider issuing an alcohol license in this situation. So my preference was going to be to allow her to, well, let's get to the bottom of this legal representation issue and make sure that we confirm who this attorney is. The Business License Division has not received an entry of appearance from this individual, so we need to make sure that they understand what they need to be doing for the benefit of this applicant. My preference is that she be fully informed and adequately represented in these proceedings. So at this time, I'm going to ask the applicant, who is Ms. Sunita Karke. And again, this is a, the matter is an administrative denial that occurred for an application for an alcohol license for Albert Food Mart Incorporated, doing business as Food Mart, at 3060 Cobb Parkway, Suite 105, with a Kennesaw mailing address. Sunita Karke is the proposed licensee. So I'm going to allow her to come forward at this point and explain why she would request that a continuance be granted by this board for a later date in order for her to secure her legal counsel. Would the applicant please come forward with your interpreter? Could you please state your full name for the record?
First of all, Namaste. My name is Sunita Karke.
First of all, Namaste. My name is Sunita Karke.
And could you please explain to the Board of Commissioners why you would like to have a continuance of this matter today?
I would like to ask and request for a new date because my lawyer is not here present with me.
And who is your attorney that's representing you?
Karen. Karen.
Karen Herner.
Karen Herner.
I'm sorry, I did not understand the name. Could you say that again?
Karen Herner. I'm not able to pronounce well.
So when we had a conversation earlier, I believe you indicated that there was an individual named Kenneth Hunter?
Oh, Kenneth Hunter. I'm so sorry for that.
That's okay.
Sorry, it's Kenneth Hunter.
Okay, so...
Very hard for me, I'm sorry.
So you have retained Kenneth Hunter, an attorney, to represent you in this matter? Is that correct?
Yes, I'll lay it out next time.
Yes, next time, I propose to bring him.
Okay. And you understand that that will be necessary for you to have your attorney here if this continuance is granted at the next hearing date?
Yes, I do.
Okay, that's all the questions I have, Madam Vice Chair, unless the board has any questions.
Yes, I do. Can you ask if 30 days to the July 12th BOC meeting is...
You understand, I'm sorry, I apologize.
If that's an adequate timeframe, or do we ask that?
Commissioner, I would actually suggest, because we're in the middle of budget season at that point in time, and we can get information from Alicia. My understanding is this particular license was denied, and so there's no serving alcohol during this, at this point in time. Is that correct?
Correct.
Correct. I would suggest that it get moved over to the August 9th, first meeting in August, first day meeting in August, so that she'd both have time to get, to secure the attorney for them to be able to make, and then it's not here during the public hearings for both the village and the budget.
Okay. And will the interpreter need to be state-certified at that time?
That is a requirement that this board can impose. That is required by ordinance, and the board is asking if you understand that you may need to have a state-certified interpreter. No offense to Ms. Baznet, but our code requires that your interpreter be state-certified. Do you understand that?
I understand that, sir, but at that time, I don't know who they will be hiring, so...
So understand that you may not be able to go forward with your hearing if you don't bring a state-certified interpreter.
I understand that.
Does she understand that?
We have been trying to get somebody like that, but we have not found any in Georgia.
Okay. Do you understand that this hearing will not take place any earlier than August 9th, I believe, and that you will not be allowed to sell alcohol at your establishment prior to that hearing if a license is granted by this board?
Yes, I do understand that. We have not started our business yet.
Okay. I have no question.
What is the length of time to secure a state certification?
I do not know the answer to that question, Madam Commissioner.
Would the interpreter know, perhaps?
My understanding is that they, and Alicia, you may be able to elaborate on this, that she had a state-certified interpreter at the License Review Board? Is that correct? No?
The board allowed her to meet board with...
With Ms. Baznet, or was there another individual?
There was another individual.
Okay. So this is potentially an issue that we're going to have to get into, I think, with the applicant prior to the next hearing, but I do not know how long it takes to be certified. I understand where you're going with your question, and that is, this individual, can you be certified? Can you get yourself certified in that period of time?
There are examinations that they conduct, but there's no written examinations yet in Nepali, so because of that, they do not have a certification program. And they can only screen us, and we are called screen court interpreters.
Have you been screened in the courts of Cobb County?
Well, I've been doing it in DeKalb, so you can verify through the courts in DeKalb.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's kind of a strange requirement, if it's not even something that's possible. Bill, it looks like you had something to offer up.
Well, the code requires, I'm in agreement with Mr. Hensley, it's always at the discretion of this board, if under particular circumstances, that's not able to acquire one in their unique circumstances, as you did approve today, and allow her to be able to actually interpret. So that is allowed, but it's at the discretion of the board.
Excellent, so, okay. So there is opportunity. Thank you.
And apparently, that's been occurring in some of our courts around the metro Atlanta area, so...
Okay, so are you requesting a continuance to the August 9th meeting? Meaning...
Yes, August 9th will be good.
So I will make a motion that we continue this case until the August 9th BOC meeting at 9:00 a.m. But yes, she was, asking for a continuance. No?
She answered the question as far as wanting the continuance, but then something else was said, and I'm wondering what was said after that initial response.
Do you have any other questions or comments for the board?
Will it be possible before the August 9th, or is that the date preferred by all?
The county manager and county attorney suggested we move it to August 9th. If we did it in July, we're in the middle of budget and village rates that have to be done by the end of July, so that...
Okay, that is fine.
Let me ask you this. You indicated that your business is not up and running yet. Is that correct?
Not yet.
When do you expect to be open for business?
As soon as the license is given, I will start.
Okay, but you understand and agree that August 9th will be the next hearing date for this matter?
Yes, I do.
So the business will be held up until this issue is resolved? I mean, are there, are there other items that are sold at this location? I'm just trying to figure out why there's a hold for the entire business until we get through this appeal.
There's still some work going on, and there's some paperwork in process. Some interior works going on inside the shop.
Alicia Gamble, did you have something? Would the rest of the store, do you have a business license, and would you be open by the July meeting?
I do have the license for the store, but since we have some interior work going on, we haven't sold as yet.
Do you have a certificate of occupancy yet for your store?
Yes, I do. It's all in my name.
How long do you think it will take for the interior work to be completed?
Maybe another 20, 22 days.
Just for your permission, I ran the board, the hearing was held back in March, and the applicant was informed and supposed to be ready to go forward today. The actual, I mean, we can go forward today if you're concerned about not having, you know, her having an issued decision related to the license and not waiting. The board's able to do that. I mean, otherwise, the continuance is her request, and the most convenient time for the board is then August 9th.
Well, if she's got a CO and a business license, she could open at any time and just wait to sell alcohol if this is approved in August.
I agree, but we don't make business decisions for her.
I know, I'm just, can you explain that to her?
Yes, Madam Vice Chair.
Yes, as soon as my interior works are completed, I will be selling the other products.
Okay.
So my question is, is this interior work that you're doing specifically for the sale of alcohol?
Just different kinds of shelves, for the beer, to cigarettes, to groceries. So those are shelves that I'm trying to make.
Okay, so she can open with the other sale of merchandise, and as soon as your interior work is completed, you just can't sell alcohol until this case is heard in August and approved, if approved.
Okay, I do understand. We will not be bringing any alcohol or any kind of preparation related to alcohol.
Okay, thank you. So the motion is to continue this to the August 9th BOC meeting? And I have had a second from, from Commissioner Gamble?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Since there is a unique situation with her interpreter being state-certified, will we just allow her to utilize her without that state certification?
That will be, have to be addressed at the hearing in August, and it is our discretion, as I understand from Mr. Hensley, that we can approve the lady that's here today.
That is correct.
Well, my thought was, if we waited until August and then decided that she has to have a state-certified interpreter, then it's going to push it back even further.
Am I missing something? I'm going to comment, not to speak, not to hold us to a decision, it seems like the analysis has to be done on a hearing-by-hearing basis. It can't, we can't project for the next hearing, like, or is that...
Correct, and we can't require her to actually show up with the same person, you know, two months from now either.
Got you, okay.
But I would say, knowing the circumstances, this board would be inclined to consider all those aspects.
Yeah, if the state doesn't have a program for Nepali, then, but we will have to make that decision at the hearing in August.
That's correct, and I believe Mr. Rowling is right, that we don't have any guarantee that it could be Ms. Baznet again. Hopefully, it will be. She seems to know what she's doing, seems to be very well-qualified, but that's on a hearing-by-hearing basis.
Okay. Do you have any more questions for us before we... Okay.
That's all for today.
We have a motion and a second.
I'm just worried about interpreter, who I will get next time.
Her attorney can assist with that, correct?
Precisely, yes. Another reason why I felt comfortable in continuing this, so she can get the help she needs.
Okay. Thank you. Call a question? Motion carries for a continuance to the August 9th meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair.
4-0. And our, would you like to run the meeting? Okay. Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, I do understand, we will not be bringing any alcohol or any kind of preparation related to alcohol.
Okay, thank you, so the motion is to continue this to the August 9th BOC meeting, and I have, had a second from, from Commissioner Gamble?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion?
Since there is a unique situation with her interpreter being state certified, will we just allow her to utilize her without that state certification?
That, that will be, have to be addressed at the hearing in August, and it is our discretion, as I understand from Mr. Hensley, that we can approve the lady that's here today.
That is correct.
Well, my thought was, if we waited until August and then decided that she has to have a state certified interpreter, then it's going to push it back even further.
I'm gonna comment, not to speak, not to hold us to a decision, it seems like the analysis has to be done on a hearing by hearing basis, it can't, we can't project for the next hearing, like, or is that?
Correct, and, and we, and we can't require her to actually show up with the same person, you know, two months from now either.
Gotcha, okay.
But I would say, knowing the circumstances, this board would be inclined to consider all those aspects.
Yeah, if the state doesn't have a program for Nepali, then, we, but we will have to make that decision at the hearing in August.
That's correct, and I believe Mr. Rowling is right, that we don't have any guarantee that it could be Ms. Baznet again, hopefully it will be, she seems to know what she's doing, seems to be very well qualified, but that's on a, a hearing by hearing basis.
Do you have any more questions for us before we?
That's all for today.
We have a motion and a second.
I'm just worried about interpreter, who I will get next time.
Her attorney can assist with that, correct?
Precisely, yes, another reason why I felt comfortable in continuing this, so she can get the help she needs.
Okay, thank you, call the question, motion carries for a continuance to the August 9th meeting, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair.
Four zero, and our, would you like to run the meeting? Okay, our meeting is adjourned, thank you.
Thank you so much.